Called to order the regular meeting of the Calquash Parish Police Jury for Thursday, June 22nd, 2023. If you would, take a moment to silence your cell phones. If there's any item that you wish to speak on tonight that's on the agenda, we ask that you fill out a blue slip you'll find there at the table at the front of the room. Once you get it filled out, you just hand it to anybody here at the staff desk. We're gonna have the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Mr. Burley. Please stand.
Good evening, Father. We just thank you for being able to gather here tonight. We ask that you guide us in our decisions and that all our decisions would be pleasing to you. We ask a prayer of protection, not only Calquash Parish, but all of Southwest Louisiana during this storm season. And we ask a special prayer for all the servicemen and women serving, especially those serving abroad. We ask this all in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Yes, sir. Mr. Abshar?
Here.
Mr. Andrew Pont?
Here.
Mr. Barris?
Here.
Mr. Barti?
Here.
Vice President Brain?
Here.
Mr. Burley?
Here.
Mr. Gilery?
Yeah.
Mr. Hayes?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Markentell?
Here.
Mr. Reshore?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Stelly?
Here.
Mr. Tremonti?
Here.
And President Landry.
Thank you, Ms. Kathy.
You're welcome.
1A, approved an application for a liquor and beer permit. Mr. Crane and his staff recommends that one renewal application be approved. Have a motion by Mr. Reshore, second by Mr. Andrew Pont. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 1B, adopt an ordinance approving the following rezoning application at the 6,000 block of Ward Line Road in Ward 3 to revert certain tracts of land from like commercial to their original zoning of agriculture. I have a motion by Mr. Barti, a second by Mr. Barris. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 1C, adopting an ordinance condemning and authorizing the demolition and removal of one accessory building located at 1022 Franklin Road in Lake Charles, Ward 3. Do we need to...I guess it's already been condemned?
It was deferred from the last meeting.
Sir?
It was deferred previously? You've got a motion, a second. There are no blue cards on this item.
All right, we got a motion by Mr. Hayes and a second by Mr. Markentell. I'll allow you to speak, even though you're late and didn't fill out the blue card. You need to come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jerry Baker. I live at 1022 Franklin Road.
Okay, you have the floor.
Well, I tore down the...all but that last wing on the end, on the west side. And it's made out of good heavy material, and I didn't see any reason why I should be forced to tear something down. It's been there through three hurricanes. But I did tear down the house part that was in the middle and the part that faced the road out there. That's all gone. I got a man ready to...I got a man ready to come and build, but he's working on it. Within another five or six days, he's gonna build my building for me. We're gonna do it.
Mr. Barris, you have a question, sir?
Yes. Is this pictured present day, or what is it?
That is as of today.
Okay, so is that satisfactory?
No, sir.
And why not?
It was part of the original structure that we had posted unsafe. And so he tore down a portion of that structure and left this portion, and we don't know if this structure is...if it meets the code or anything. There's not been any plans submitted to us to indicate that.
And he's fixing to build a building?
He can certainly...he can build a building. And he can do that, but we have to have some plans showing how he's gonna do that. Even if he's gonna use this portion, if y'all allow him to keep this, we need to see how that's gonna...we have no idea at this point.
Is anybody here that'd come out to my house to look? Raymond came this morning and took pictures of it, I know that. But it don't look like it does right there, right now. I've got it all...the front of it is all even. It's all leveled out right there, and it's ready for when they put the poles in. I'll put five poles down each side, 30 foot. They're gonna be...I'm sorry, it might be six of them. There'll be 12 of them altogether. There's gonna be two more on the back and on the front. And that part right there is made out of board running up. I don't know how many everybody worked in the oil field, but you can put 30-ton trucks on that lumber right there, and it's gonna hold it. You gotta take a...you gotta take a pre-drill through it before you're gonna put a nail in it and soap it, before you're gonna drive a nail in that. And that means it's not gonna come apart.
Okay. Mr. Stelly?
Mr. Baker, are your intentions to come up with a plan of what you're gonna do with this project?
Well, I've already submitted it to the...
Do you have a plan, Wes?
No, sir.
You should've.
When did you submit it?
I was there today, most of the morning. And I brought it earlier than that.
I don't have a copy of it.
Mr. Crane does not have a copy. Do you have a copy, or do you not? You have nothing?
I haven't seen it. I haven't seen any plan.
You understand, you have to have a plan, and they also have to see if this structure is...can be reused. And I'm assuming you're gonna send somebody out there to see if the structure is sound?
We sent the inspector out there this morning to take pictures of that because we were...it was indicated to us that he had torn a portion of it down. But we have not had any submittals up until this point. So I have...I don't have any idea. I mean, he had 30 days ago to submit something, and we don't...we just got it, I guess, if he submitted it.
I've been up there twice and brought paperwork, and they took pictures of it and everything, gave me my copies back, but...
Are you finished, Mr. Stelly?
For now, yes, sir.
Mr. Hayes?
Mr. Baker, what is the timeframe you're estimating for all this?
Supposedly, within the next two weeks, the part that we tore down is gonna be. But I'm not gonna add that piece on that I had that wing on the other side. I'm not even gonna fool with that. I'm just gonna have the building part, and I'll have the wing on the side for the horses and cows, and a place for my chickens. And I'm gonna have that part in the middle there that's gonna be like a feed room and part of it, and my tractor's gonna be room for me to park my tractor with the front end loader in the bush hole inside there.
I'm a little bit confused. And the reason I'm confused is, we gave you 30 days last time, last meeting?
Well, Mr. Hayes, I've had 20...22...no, 27 contractors come out. But they've got so much money now that they don't wanna work. They've got their bank accounts loaded, and they left here and went down to Homer and loaded again. They don't wanna work. They're tired. They're wore out. I've gone to other people's houses that got the same problem I got. They're having a hard time. I mean, there's a lot of people. And there's a woman down my street that's giving me all kind of trouble.
Okay, we'll be back. Mr. Tremonti?
I'm just curious, in the process here, Wes?
Yes, sir.
We sent somebody out to take pictures of it.
Yeah, he was out there this morning. I stopped talking to him.
But when do we go back and inspect it?
Just one person speaks at a time. You do not have the floor.
When do we go back and inspect it to make sure that that frame is up to par? Once he submits the plan?
He has to submit plans. We have to review those plans to make sure they meet the building code. And then, once he gets his permit, then we will go out there and do an inspection.
Yeah.
He doesn't have a permit yet.
Mr. Baker, who are you talking to at the office?
Yolanda.
Yolanda.
Yeah, Yolanda.
And you brought the plans to her when?
I brought them to her...I don't exactly what day, but I brought them to her last week, and I've been in and out of there several times. That's not the only problem I'm having with. I put a C-cann in my front yard, and the first girl that I talked to, kind of a dark, conflicted girl, she came and told me I had to have it 60 foot from my ditch to my...it'd be in the front door of my house.
Yeah.
There's a big old tree in the front yard that's gonna interrupt all that. Raymond was there. He saw where I wanted to put the thing.
We need to stay on the subject. And what we're speaking about now is what's on the agenda, is not the C-cann.
I feel with you, with the contractors. I understand that's a problem. More so, it seems like...and not knocking anybody, and Wes is...we've had...I've had people come up here and say that they brought stuff. Now, I don't believe that they did. But it's more than one person, since we've gone through this, that have come up here and said they brought plans that I've heard, and we haven't inspected. So...
Mr. Crane?
Why can't we give him some time, a week, or whatever, 15 days to bring his plans and get it situated, if you've already got a contractor?
We just need a motion, a second. Nate votes. You can do whatever you want. Mr. Crane, would you please answer that question?
So typically, what...and there are several ways that it can happen. We have an online permitting process that someone can upload documents to. And they can upload those documents one at a time, and it may not be a complete application. So they can continue loading until they have a complete application, or they can bring those into our office one at a time, and we will put those in our file, our computer file, until we have a complete application for it to be reviewed. So there may be that there be some submittals, but we don't have a complete application. And then, once we do that, then we will start reviewing it. So that's the reason why you may have people that are bringing things in, but it may not be a complete application. It may not be started the review yet.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Andrew Pont?
I realize this is Mr. Hayes' district, and I always, you know, look to that individual or that particular JuAR of the district. It sounds like to me Mr. Baker is trying to make an effort. I see the dilemma that staff is faced with. But it seemed like it would be in order, Mr. President and Mr. Hayes, that we help Mr. Baker and give an extension, whether it's 30 days or whatever. Now, I think we have to draw a line at some point. You know, you have to comply with what staff is requiring. But I am open. I'll yield back for the JuAR of that district to offer that, if in being so inclined. But it sounds like to me we need to try to work with him a little further. That's my opinion.
You're done, Mr. Andrew Pont. Mr. Barris?
Okay, thank you. All while keeping in mind that we may not let you keep that shit, okay? Just keep, you know, follow that process. If you got a plan to tie it in, and it sturdies it up, whatever, but, you know, that's also gonna be taken into consideration.
Mr. Hayes?
Mr. Crane, we gave him 30 days last time?
Yes, sir.
Would it be out of line to give him 30 days this time?
Sir, I'm fine with that, if y'all are inclined to give him another...some more time to be able to get his information into us. And I can tell you that myself and Mr. Dan Bruce, who's my chief building official, we sat down with Mr. Baker early on in this process. He came in our office, and we sat down, and we explained to him what he needed to do. And I understand the dilemmas that are going on here. And there are some issues with getting, you know, workers or whatever. But y'all had a deadline, and that's what we were working towards. And so until today, I'm just knowing that he submitted this, we don't have time to review that. So all I can do is tell you, hey, this is what we have today. And as it is...as it is right now, I would recommend it be condemned. But if he's got a plan, and he wants to...if y'all wanna give him more time to submit that, and we can review it, I'm fine with that.
I would go with a 30-day extension. But it's a drop-dead 30-day extension. You come in here, and our next meeting, it's gonna be a little bit different. You're telling us basically that you can do what you need to do in the next 30 days. Is that right?
I finally got somebody that's stepping up, and instead, they're gonna help me. And I've got paperwork that tells what the cost is. But, man, things has jumped up ungodly. I mean, just to replace...I went to Lee Mallis' place out there, and you know what he wanted to be, that piece in the middle where I took the house part out just to replace that part of it, and 30...I'll make it...instead of being 20 foot across the front and 30...I mean, 22 foot, I wanted 30 foot to accommodate that tractor. You know what he asked me for?
Okay, Mr. Baker?
$30,000.
Mr. Baker, all right, look. Have...when you left that office today, did that young lady that was helping you, did she indicate to you that she now has everything she needs? Or is she still?
No, she didn't.
Okay, so I would strongly suggest that you call back and just say, okay, where am I? And exactly, in writing, what else are you missing to where that application can be completed and everything can be reviewed? Because it's...even though you've come down here maybe 15 times, evidently, they're still missing some documents or what have you. So call tomorrow to find out where you are, would be my suggestion. All right, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Hayes, and then we had a second by Mr. Barris before Mr. Baker got here to condemn. So are you going to just withdraw the motion, and Mr. Barris withdraw a second? That's the easiest thing to do. And now we have a new motion to defer for 30 days. Is that correct?
Correct.
And do we...we need a second. We have a motion by Mr. Hayes to defer for 30 days, second by Mr. Andrew Pont. Is there any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Thank you all.
1D, adopt a resolution extending Executive Order 2020-09A, which waived zoning restrictions and fees for temporary dwelling units as a result of Hurricanes Laura and Delta through August 28th, 2023. Have a motion by Mr. Abshar, second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 1E, adopt a resolution extending Executive Order 2020-15, which waived free board elevation requirements as a result of Hurricanes Laura and Delta through August 28th, 2023. Have a motion by Mr. Burley, second by Mr. Smith. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 1F, authorize the Director of the Division of Planning and Development to notify the following property owners to show cause at a public hearing on August 3rd, 2023, as to why the structures on the properties, as stipulated, should not be condemned. Number 1, 547 Bozo Road in Moss Bluff. Number 2, 876 Bozo Road in Moss Bluff. Number 3, 1348 Park Road in Moss Bluff. Number 4, 7014 Windmill Lane in Lake Charles. Number 5, 6109 Legere Road in Lake Charles. Number 6, 2529 Stingray Drive in Lake Charles. Number 7, 2331 Salmon Street in Lake Charles. Number 8, 1112 Arcean Le Blue Road in Lake Charles. Number 9, 6850 Oyster Drive in Lake Charles. Number 10, 6017 Adele Street in Lake Charles. Number 11, 158 Wanda Lane in Dequincy. Number 12, 4821 North Highway 27 in Dequincy. Number 13, 1501...oh, no, 151st Street in Starks. Number 14, 141 Second Street in Starks. Number 15, 152 Second Street in Starks. Number 16, 156 Third Street in Starks. Number 17, 148 Third Street in Starks. Number 18, 4989 Shelton Road in Vinton. Number 19, 1955 White Oak Street in Vinton. Number 2426 Morning Glory Lane in Westlake. I had a motion by Mr. Reshore and a second by Mr. Stelly on all bullets. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 2A, approve minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated May 18th, 2023. I had a motion by Mr. Abshar, second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 2B, adopt a resolution approving a call by Waterworks District Number 7 of Wards 4 and 6 for an election to be held on Saturday, November 18th, 2023, to renew, levy, and collect an ad valorem tax of six mills for a period of 10 years. Have a motion by Mr. Markentell, second by Mr. Burley. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 2C, adopt a resolution approving a call by Waterworks District Number 8 of Wards 3 and 8 for an election to be held on Saturday, November 18th, 2023, to renew, levy, and collect a special tax of six and 24 100ths mills for a period of 10 years. Have a motion by Mr. Stelly, second by Mr. Reshore. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 2D, adopt a resolution, amend in Section 2 of Ordinance Number 7225 to reflect that the Board of Commissioners for Consolidated Gravity Drainage District Number 1, which is West Calquashu, shall be appointed by the police jury to serve four-year terms from the dates of appointments by the police jury. Have a motion by Mr. Markentell, second by Mr. Burley. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 2E, adopt an ordinance, amend in Section 2 of Ordinance Number 7226 to reflect that the Board of Commissioners for Consolidated Gravity Drainage District Number 2, which is East Calquashu, shall be appointed by the police jury to serve four-year terms from the dates of appointments by the police jury. Have a motion by Mr. Gilery, second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 2F, adopt a resolution declaring Monday, July 3rd, 2023 as a parish holiday. Have a motion by Mr. Markentell, second by Mr. Andrew Pont. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 3A, adopt a resolution approving a temporary construction servitude agreement for moss gully improvements, Project Task 2. Have a motion by Mr. Reshore, second by Mr. Smith. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 3B, adopt a resolution approving a temporary construction servitude agreement for the East Tank Form Road Bridge Replacement Project. Have a motion by Mr. Stelly, a second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 3C, adopt an ordinance approving the purchase of property located at 2601 Preon Wood Drive, Lake Charles, through funding received from a FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program to mitigate future flood losses of this repetitive loss structure. Have a motion by Mr. Abshar, a second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 3D, adopt an ordinance approving the purchase of property located at 5742 Alder Street, Lake Charles, through funding received from the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program to mitigate future flood losses of this repetitive loss structure. Motion by Mr. Brain, second by Mr. Hayes. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 4A, adopt a resolution approving a grant agreement between the police jury and the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Continuum of Care Program. Have a motion by Mr. Barti, a second by Mr. Barris. Is there any...oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Smith. Is there any correction? You got that, Ms. Kathy?
Yes, sir.
We don't wanna mess that up. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Where are we, Mr. Burley? 4B. Acknowledge a submittal of minutes from the Calquash Parish Human Services Advisory Board with a meeting held on February 15th, 2023. Have a motion by Mr. Gilery, a second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 5A, adopt a resolution approving a cooperative endeavor agreement for programmatic activities and salary assistance for a partnership coordinator and for nursing and clerical services at the Calquashu Parish Health Unit. Have a motion by Mr. Burley, a second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries.
Move on 6A.
6A, approve payment of all current invoices and advice regarding monthly budget-to-actual comparisons on the general fund. I have a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont, a second by...
Barti.
Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 6B, adopt a resolution for pest control services.
Move on 6B.
After review of the proposals, staff recommends Orkin LLC... Be awarded the bid, yes. Motion by Mr. Barti, second by Mr. Reshore. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 6C, actions on bids for food commodities and related items for use by the Burton Coliseum Complex. Staff recommends the bid of Cisco Food Services Gulf Coast be accepted. Have a motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Reshore. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 6D, action on bids for food commodities and related items for use by the Office of Juvenile Justice Services. Staff recommends the bid of Cisco Food Services Gulf Coast be accepted. Have a motion by Mr. Markentell, second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing...yes, sir. Mr. Barris?
Is there a reason why we only get one bid for these...the Burton Complex and the juvenile justice? We're getting one bid, and it's an out-of-town bidder. I know there's places around here that do that. Is there anybody?
Please state your name and position with the parish, please.
Hi, Kristy Cumberland, purchasing agent. So Cisco is our current provider. Also, we've been with the contract for them for the last five years. We have sent it out to multiple people. We did get other companies... We have sent it out to multiple people. We did get other companies that submitted questions. So, it looks like they were gonna submit, but then they ended up not. We also advertise it electronically, so it's out there for everyone nationwide. They can actually see it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're done, Mr. Barris? Are you good, Mr. Barris?
Yes, yes, more than.
We're here to please, sir. 6...what are we on? D?
6E. Sorry, sir.
No, we're on E. Action on bids for four 2023 or newer tandem dump trucks. Staff recommends a low bid of Martin Automotive Group in the amount of $607,759. Be accepted. I have a motion by Mr. Markentell, second by Mr. Burley. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 6F, action on bids for crushed stones. Staff recommends that the bids of APEC aggregate supply, DP aggregates, and port aggregates be accepted. I have a motion by Mr. Burley, a second by Mr. Andropont. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 6G, action on bids for janitorial supplies. Staff recommends the bids of Economical Janitorial and Paper Supplies, Sanitary Supply Company, and Unipack Corporation be accepted. I have a motion by Mr. Staley, a second by Mr. Reshard. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 6H, action on bids for mosquito control solvents and products. Staff recommends the bids of Adapco LLC, Pompeley Oil Acquisition LLC, and Target Specialty Products be accepted. I have a motion by Mr. Markentell, second by Mr. Lewis. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 6I, action on bids for assorted pipes and fittings. Staff recommends the bids of Unis Coastal Culvert and Supply and Colburn Supply Company be accepted. I have a motion by Mr. Barti, a second by Mr. Lewis. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 6J, action on bids for collection and distribution pipes and fittings. Staff recommends the bids of Colburn Supply Company, Core in Maine, Ferguson Waterworks, and Lafayette Wind Water Works Company be accepted. I have a motion by Mr. Burley, a second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 6K, adopt a resolution accepting the Animal Services Emergency Incinerator Replacement Project as substantially complete. I have a motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Reshard. Is there any discussion? Is there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 6L, adopt a resolution accepting the Office of Juvenile Justice Services Hurricane Repair Project as substantially complete. I have a motion by Mr. Abshire, a second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 6M, advertise for bids for the Mallard Junction Office Building Hurricane Repair Project. I have a motion by Mr. Staley, a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 6N, advertise for bids for the Gum Cove Road Bridge Replacement Project.
Don't move.
I have a motion by Mr. Tremonti, a second by Mr. Barris. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Number 7 is a list of advised items for various tax calls that will be on the police jury's August 3 agenda and a list of property condemnations that require no action by the jury. I now just need a motion to adjourn. We have it from Mr. Abshire. We are now adjourned.